I'm gonna hang up. Thank you.
Ellen was leaving paperwork for tonight's meeting. She didn't leave anything.
There's nothing in the box, nothing. They should have the plans.
Well, I have the stuff from last.
Ellen said, told me this morning she left it out for the last meeting and which she doesn't know who took it, but.
I know I didn't take it.
I was remote, so.
I have what she left for the last meeting.
Okay.
But nothing but tonight.
It should be the same, I would think.
Opening up the hearing, this is an appeal on a zoning board decision. Continued hearing for fifty-eight to sixty, Exbridge Road, variance application. And there are several items that the judge has asked for us to confirm. One of which is what the building is going to be used for, commercial or residential. Are you gonna answer that?
Good evening, sir. Ernest Swan Council for Mr. Benoit. And we also have some experts here with us. If you want to answer that question, primarily you'll be using that for.
Residential.
Okay. And the other, which is what the board had already determined, I believe, was that there's no other location on that property that could accommodate the garage you're planning on.
Right.
That is correct. The board already agreed on that.
And I don't think that was an issue for the judge, I think.
I think, Marian.
If I can clarify, in the court order, the board has to make a specific finding on the proposed use of the garage.
We just did.
Yes, and also and also I would like to remind.
Drainage.
Yes, we'll get to that in a second. I would also like to remind the board that we need to we need to hear evidence on on what that proposed use is. So do you.
Yeah, the prior evidence that we already voted on is still in effect.
So, and in terms of an administrative matter, the the board is considering the prior record as well as any new evidence presented today. Jim, do I have that right?
Yes.
Um, I have a question. What reason do we have to think that wouldn't be used for residential?
Because we just, oh, because apparently the judge has asked us to confirm whether it's commercial or residential.
Right, so it's not, it's not because of evidence came to light of the other. It's just an administrative.
Administrative.
Original is gonna be used to pack his motor home in, which is residential.
Right, I remember that.
From my boat in. That's right.
I just wanted to clarify that.
I thought that was the original.
These are questions that the court has raised.
Yeah, they wanted you to confirm.
Yeah. So that's nothing's changed. You're still planning.
No.
Packing a motor home in.
Yeah.
The original use is from the original variance request is still going to be the use.
Going false.
Same. Yes, sir.
Okay.
We asked him, he said, yes, it's residential. What do we need?
Right, just a little.
I understand. Sure. So, Mr. Benoit, if you could expand a bit on the residential use. You've heard some dialogue about the motor home, the boat, and stuff that was addressed at the trial. But for the record, could you specifically clarify what that will be used for? You've said residential, but what in fact do you intend to put in it?
My truck, my boat, my tractors, a big tractor with a plow on it, it's gonna go in there.
Is that commercial or is that residential?
It's residential.
The tractor is residential.
Yeah, it's a God-in-tractor with a little snow blower on it.
Oh, I see, alright.
It's for Paul, his truck.
Oh, alright, yeah.
Yeah, it's not. It's my own.
Well, I just sort of just jumped out.
I wanna clarify everything. I don't want any questions.
Yes. So, and the boat, you don't use it for business?
No.
No, okay. So, you know, if the board has questions for us regarding that, but I think his testimony is.
There's not gonna be any retail out of it, no retail selling, none of that stuff.
No stores.
Yeah.
No business opening. It's purely for stuff that a normal household owner might use it for.
Yeah.
Garden supplies, whatever.
Did the judge have any other comments? Any other?
There was an issue about drainage.
About drainage, I heard that.
No, yeah.
And has that been addressed?
Yeah, so if the board's ready for that, I'd like to have a gentleman come up, actually, two gentlemen. Can have them both come up.
I'm happy with the drainage of the garage.
I'll let them each identify themselves and then I'll have Mr. Fisk go first.
But they didn't show a revised plan. Guys died.
Yeah.
Wow. Didn't show the. Drainage.
Oh, we better care, I think.
So, gentlemen, if you could just identify yourselves.
Good evening. Andy Fisk, one-on-one, Blackstone Street, Mendon.
Wait, hold on, hold on. And you, sir?
I'm Phil Housing, lay planning.
So if I could, I'd like to have Mr. Fisk speak first, because he can provide a historical understanding of the property as he did the site work. Would that be okay?
Well, I think the only thing that I'm interested in, or the board is interested in, is we had proposed or suggested to alleviate what we thought was the only issue in this whole thing was water going into the neighbor's property.
He's gonna give you the historical perspective.
And the solution we suggested was either a swale or a berm going from sixteen down to the lake, which I was under the impression was going to happen. It's not shown on the last plan you gave us. And I raise that as a question now as to what's going on with that. I don't even know the historical background of what, where, and when. All I need to know is is that the solution that we all thought was going into place is going into place.
Okay. Well, Mr. Fisk would testify that based on the site work he did, there's no drainage issue there now. However, after that, the engineer will then tell you what his analysis and recommendations are.
Okay.
Mr. Fisk, if you could briefly tell them a little bit about what was done there to prevent.
In the very beginning, when Mr. Benoit and his wife purchased this property, in doing a site walk in the very beginning before any excavation was done, there was a drainage issue where the existing driveway is now, where the water would run off the street and it would actually puddle in the neighbor's yard to the right side of the property. And there was like vernal pools there. On the print that we had from Shea Engineering at the time, they specifically showed grading to pitch the water away from the neighbors. Mr. Benoit had delivered numerous loads of gravel to bring the driveway level up so it wasn't running down. And it does now pitch properly. It's my understanding that when the judge did the walkthrough, he witnessed the water going down the center of the driveway now because the pitch is working. So, as far as the berm, that's the first I've heard of it. And if this is designed, then absolutely it would be installed.
So that kind of gives you a little bit of an understanding how we got to where we are. And now I'll turn to the engineer to tell you what additional work he's done since the trial.
I was not aware of any potential berm either.
Well, excuse me. At the walkthrough that we did with the attorneys and some of the neighbors, that was discussed. And in particular, what the neighbor was having an issue with the damage, with the water rather. And I thought that that was conveyed to the owner there.
Jim.
Okay, well, whatever it was. So, anyway, I'm sorry, continue.
So, we looked at the site from stormwater management standards. The site, that stormwater management standard does not apply to the site because of the level of construction is very minor. But what we did is we applied the stormwater management standards from the Commonwealth per their regulations, and we're planning on infiltrating any additional runoff from the proposed garage. So there'd be no net increase of runoff from the property from the proposed construction. We're doing that with an infiltration pit.
And maybe you could show them a little bit on the diagram of that infiltration pit? And. Well, before you, yeah, show it to councilman, why don't you show it to Attorney Lane before you take it to the board, just so he has seen.
See the pink outline? That's the gutters and the infiltration. It's right here.
You might want to show them where.
It's clearly marked.
Oh, okay.
I can see it here, Andy.
Who you have?
Well, I'm.
Is it marked?
In case, I understand. Maybe they don't. Maybe Tom doesn't.
I see it.
Sure, absolutely. See the pink markings?
Okay.
That's the gutter on the roof line of the building. And then that little rectangle was the infiltrator introducing the water back into the groundwater without running across the surface of the yard.
Okay. And so, we know that it will run in a path that brings it right to here?
Yes.
Okay.
It had to be pitched that way.
Off the garden frame, so we pipe along the building.
So are we saying that there's no water going into her property from Benoit's property?
No additional water from the proposed garage.
And I think what he's actually saying is there'll be no dispersment of additional water anywhere because it will go into.
Public garage, correct. It means a stormwater.
Yeah. So, the displacement of water from the garage will not go anywhere, including the neighbor's yard, because it'll be reclaimed into that.
Yeah, we have to create it into the garage.
I think it'll be better than it was today.
Oh, yeah. I mean, he's gonna spend some money on it, but yeah.
Yeah, it's better than it is today.
Yes.
There is water, but there's drainage. Whether you leveled it off or.
It's not what it was when they started.
Well, there is, yeah. I testified to that in court, just for my support.
You have pictures?
You don't need pictures. The judge was there. Focus on the way the driveway is currently set up. Pitch is to the center, okay? And then it runs off into her property. It supports that. The judge saw it, everybody was there. The chairman was there, he saw it. The road is visible. There's common runoff from the driveway. It's on the pavement. That's the fact. That's why we're here.
Yeah, exactly.
Because there's runoff. And, you know, the least you can do is address that. Because it appears you're adding pavement, driveway to this building. So, there's nothing on that plane that shows you the drainage from the increased pavement for the driveway is gonna go. It's apparently gonna go down the existing driveway back onto the neighbor's property.
There isn't going to be any increased driveway.
No.
I think you should.
What does that mean?
I keep hearing the word additional water, right? We don't want any water going over there from his driveway. So I don't want to hear the word additional.
But there's not gonna be any more additional water. Only so much water falls in this square footage. Yes. The gas falls on the ground, on the roof, no matter where it falls.
But the issue is, in the past, from the driveway, water has been going onto her property. And that's what we're trying to stop. And that was the reason for the suggestion for either a berm or a swale. And I thought that was all settled, and I was shocked to hear that we're coming back here.
But I think what the engineer's gonna tell you, that's not the case.
Well, she's saying that it's still running.
But my understanding of the judge's decision was not what they're indicating. The judge said, you need to have professional, you should do a professional analysis of the displacement of water from the new garage. That's what the judge's order was. Now, look, he's the expert. He's gonna tell you that no water's running off of the driveway into her property.
But that. But water is apparently running off the driveway onto her property.
Is that an existing condition before?
That's the reason we're here, is they're trying to stop the construction so that they can get the water issue resolved. All right? That's the whole crux of this thing. Let the construction go ahead or solve our water problem and build your building.
Certainly, a berm sounds like it would work. This is the first I've heard of.
Well, it's not the first that's been discussed.
I think this is gonna help, if it is running on her property, this will definitely help it.
Right, but.
There's no doubt about it, because this is gonna capture all the water that in this square footage, it's gonna go into this system.
But if they think this should be a, you know, I kind of saw.
It may eliminate.
With the fences, but if they think it should be higher. I don't think.
The berm would go on the, right along the edge of the driveway on the top. So it keeps the water on this driveway.
Yeah, are you opposed to a berm?
I don't think so.
Are you opposed to putting a berm there?
If I may.
I don't, when I bought the property, the whole right-hand side of the driveway was a rock that went right onto her property. I brought that elevation up with Andy. Everything was sloped on my property, so it stays on my property.
Are you opposed to the berm that Chairman Cargie has.
A berm or a swale, either one.
So if I may, the judge's decision, there are certain specific findings the board has to make, right? This is a reconsideration of a variance, so the board has to make specific findings as to the elements of a variance finding. So that includes questions about the shape, topography, or soil conditions. We do have to revisit that. That also includes, you know, whether it would frustrate the intent or purpose of the bylaw. And we can run through each of those standards more explicitly. So those are the findings we're making, and the judge is explicit in his decision that the board needs to make a finding as to the proposed use of the garage, which is why we started at that first point.
I think we've done that first step.
Yes, we did that first step. And then the question about, so drainage, where, this is where the question about an expected use, the expected use of the garage comes in. If the board finds it's commercial, and this is what it says in the decision, if the board finds it's commercial, it would require site plan approval. Right?
I don't believe this will be commercial.
I think we already decided that it wasn't now.
Right, so I'm.
She's just kind of going through the list.
To make sure we know exactly what the task, what the board's task is tonight.
We appreciate that. So, continue.
So, yes, so.
What's the next issue you'd like to address?
So why don't we go through the statutory elements and make sure.
Each one separately.
All right, so, so we need to look at the very first one here is we need, the board needs to consider the soil condition, shape, or topography of the land or structures affecting the land.
So.
So if there's a specific, unique topographical, topographical shape or specific, unique soil conditions.
It's a ledge.
To that. Yes, so can you speak to that?
Sure, so, well.
Do you have any evidence?
Fifty-one, two. Okay. So certainly, there's a tremendous amount of ledge there that we're aware of that does not allow him to place it in a different area, particularly, I believe, between where it's proposed and the house. That whole area is ledged there. We can't put it down, down towards the lake for a couple of reasons. One, we get into the conservation issue near the wetland. And of course, that is a very muddy soil down there that shouldn't have a structure on it. The shape of the the lot.
The lot.
That's why you have an expert here. The shape of the lot, as you know, the, my client's house is very close, looking to the left side, very close to the property line. It's impossible to put it there. You can't put it on the other side because that's where the driveway is, and if you put it there, then you wouldn't have the ability to get to your garage, to your house. So it's very restrictive where he can put it. He's got a ledge issue in one area, and then he has a significant soil issue down towards the water. And of course, then we run into the putting a structure close to the lake, which of course would be an issue with conservation. And so, he's really stuck that that's the only place, as best I can tell, that it can be placed. So that's the hardship. He doesn't have other places on the property that he can put it.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't.
Please identify yourself.
Plan, one of the abutters on the sixty-six Uxbridge Road. I don't understand what they're calling a hardship here. The hardship is, he doesn't have room for this very large structure that he wants to build without getting a significant variance to the fifty-foot setback to the front. He's already removed a tremendous amount of ledge back in the summer of twenty-twenty-one from where he intends to put this garage. So apparently, ledge wasn't an issue because he's removed a lot of it. So I, we just want to be clear about why this was a hardship in the first place. I mean, I would like to build a nice exercise room addition to my house. The property doesn't allow for it. The bylaws setbacks doesn't allow for it. We could try to get a variance, you know, to squeeze it in, but there is no hardship, you know? It's not a hardship for me not to have an exercise room added to my house. What exactly is the original hardship? We never really got a clear description of that, you know, from the original set of meetings. At least, not that we understood or I understood. And, you know, with respect, I just would really like to hear that from either Mr. Benoit or the board as to what they considered the original hardship that would allow this extreme difference, you know, from a fifty-foot setback to only a nine-foot setback. That's extreme.
I don't believe it's extreme. I do not believe that's extreme.
It's routine.
Because we've done it fifteen every day, done all the time.
Thank you. I think one was just approved on TAFDA.
That's right. Around the lake, it's approved all the time.
But what is the hardship?
The lots are too small to begin with. The lots don't meet the, we're here because of zoning board, because the lots do not meet the sixty thousand square foot. None of the lots do over there. We all know that.
Guess you shouldn't.
And that's a hardship.
A giant garage built there.
Your neighbor Kathy just got a variance for her lot, the same reason, she wanted to move the house closer.
Who did?
Kathy.
Well, she only got one.
A variance. Well, it's still going to require a variance because it was a small lot, what I'm saying. No matter what anybody does there, they have to get a variance because the lots are small, no matter what you do.
And the statement that it's.
I'm not saying she's right or wrong. I'm just saying, if you do anything, you need a variance. Everybody, everybody along there has them.
The current structure is, I believe, two feet off of the sidewalk, so this is actually an improvement.
Yes, because we asked him, the original plan was fifty feet, I believe, right? Garage is gonna be fifty-two or five feet long.
Yeah, fifty-one by.
Yeah, then I asked to have it reduced, and you did. You did what we asked.
And as far as the ledge goes, he did remove ledge where we want to put the garage.
That's right.
But it can't move the ledge that close to the house, because if you blasted a jackhammer it, you can damage your foundation.
I make one more, one statement. Mr. Chairman, you mentioned either a berm or a swale. The, from the top of the driveway, the slope with the toe of that slope is right at the property line. So there is no room to dig a swale between.
A berm. But the berm is the answer. Actually, the berm is what I suggested.
Okay.
But I heard it at the walk. And I thought that was, excuse me, but apparently it got lost in the translation.
I just don't want to get off the subject. We're doing one thing at a time. We're doing one thing at a time.
Okay, so I think we've answered that.
No, actually, if I meant, Mr. Chairman, you know, you're overlooking the fact that there's plenty of room on the east side of that property. Plenty of room for the building he wants to propose. He just wants to stick it in that corner because he wants to sell off the rest of his properties. Yeah, but that's a non-conforming situation.
That's why I used before this.
That's why before the zoning, we don't know that he wants to sell off the rest of the property.
Well, we don't, it doesn't matter whether he wants to or he doesn't. He currently owns it. And as long as he owns it, he has plenty of room to place that garage on the east side of the property without a variance.
It's two separate lots.
The fact that he wants to sell it is a wholly separate issue.
We'd never get a warrant of variance.
It's not the east side of the property. It's another lot.
No, it's, the lots merged. He owns both of them, all three of them. He's got one lot. Those lines have all disappeared. He is trying to get you to allow him to re-divide his lot into two lots.
Exactly. Well, no, that's already, from what I understand, there's already, they're already separate lots.
They've merged. You can ask your attorney, they have merged. He owns one lot. That's all he owns, one lot which does not currently conform to zoning. So you're allowing him, I guess, is what you're intending to do, is to take a non-conforming lot and split it in half and giving him a variance to do it, to create a hardship. There's no existing hardship. He's got plenty of room to build that garage on the east side of the property, which is his property. He can build it there.
Well, he couldn't.
To put it anywhere else.
Because he needs sixty thousand square feet. He only has sixteen plus eight thousand five hundred square feet.
So what's his total square footage?
It'd be a little over twenty-five thousand.
It's a little more than that.
Well, a little bit more. I didn't, just adding my.
If you look at that plan, he's got plenty of room to go to the building on the east side.
And not cut the zoning bylaws.
What do you mean? His plan.
He, my client.
You'll see that this.
My client does not agree.
He's got this whole spot here.
He has three separate tax bills.
No, there's only three lots. Eighty-five hundred square feet, six thousand here. He owns this property. He can split this house right here, this garage right here, there was.
Are you basing the idea that the lots are merged off of?
That's the law. Ask your attorney.
He has three separate tax bills.
Doesn't matter. That does not, he owns one lot. Those three lots were combined the day he purchased them. That's the law. They merge. The lots' lines disappear. He owns one lot. He's got plenty of room. There's absolutely no hardship. You're making it up. Yeah, your attorney. She will tell you that the lots have merged. They're in common ownership. Those lines have disappeared. Now, he's trying to create, you know, a new line, but he's not entitled to do that. He's trying to create a hardship where there isn't one. And, you know, God bless him for trying, but.
That was one of the hardships. The other hardship was the soil condition, was the ledge.
Well, but.
So if I, so.
There's no problem on the east side. He can build that.
Your attorney Lane.
That there's a ledge problem over here.
And the only place in this entire area is right here where he can build, right on top of the ledge he's been blasting for years? He can blast ledge over here if he wants to blast ledge, no problem. Put it right there. You got a shed there, you got a shed there. You can put that there, but not this building. That's ridiculous.
He's never blasted once. Attorney Lane is not accurate. And so Attorney Lane, are you saying that if I buy two laws of lane, side by side, as an operation of law, they merge into one?
Absolutely. You got a law degree, you should know.
No, don't start insulting me. Okay, no, don't start insulting me. Be a profession.
All right, I will tell you. The law in fact is that when you buy two lots that are bought, put in common ownership, you lose your grandfather rights. The lots merge.
I guess I have to, I have to, I'm sorry, I want to stop this.
Wait, but you said grandfather rights? So we're talking two different issues here. So if I buy two lots next to each other, that our grandfather, are you telling me that they merge as an operation of law?
If they both comply with zoning, they still merge, but there's no problem separating them because they both comply. If they don't comply, as these lots don't, they merge, and you're not allowed to separate them. Or without.
I have a sixty-four thousand dollar question here. I would like to know what the abutters, besides the water issue, what the abutters problem with this building, this garage is? Forget, I don't care about whether or not he could put it somewhere else or on the moon. I'd like to know what the abutters issues are specifically, besides water.
It's real simple. The town of Mendon's voters have decided that on this street, buildings have to be fifty feet from the street line. They, they're.
Until they come before our board to get a change.
Yes.
You're only entitled to give them a variance if it's a hardship that relates to the soil. shape.
We already did.
We already did that.
Don't.
We already did that.
I don't agree.
Why can he not build that building on the east side of that property? What's the hardship? Tell me why he can't build it in that big open space right there.
Because he doesn't want them.
Well, that's not a hardship.
He's before this board because he doesn't want to.
He can go down and get a building permit and put it over here with no variance. No way, no way. This lot's only fifty-three thousand square foot.
Absolutely wrong.
That's wrong.
Well, that's an area variance. That's not a that's not a setback variance.
He's got to come to the board for variance.
And I still I still want the answer from from the neighbors asking what they're proud of this.
A nonconforming lot, he has to come before.
Because I'm really I'm really upset that we're back here. Be perfectly honest with you.
That's because you didn't make the findings that the law requires when you originally.
Yes, we did. Yes.
The judge didn't agree with you. Okay, the judge says you didn't make the findings.
The judge asked for clarification.
The judge asked for specific.
Clarification.
Use of the garage because of the runoff issue. He found that only Miss Bailey had standing here.
Don't misinform the board.
Okay, you don't misinform the board and you tell the board that those lots have merged and he's not entitled to.
I would I would like.
Even if they have merged.
I would like to hear the town council on that about the lots merging.
So and I'll get to that point in a second, but um and I also, as when we started the meet the hearing, I mentioned that we're also considering the prior record in addition to new evidence that's being presented. So that's why, of course, we're happy to hear from the abutters. We're happy to hear from any evidence you may have before us as well as the applicant, Mr. Benoit.
I appreciate that.
Yes. So in terms of the the merger, so are you referring to the assessors' maps? I would have to look at that. Where did you?
That the basic principle of law.
Common ownership.
That when when nonconforming lots go to common ownership, they merge. And now you have one big lot.
We have places all over town. That's never happened.
We we've had we've had situations where people have come in front of this board looking to merge lots before looking to separate lots and and, you know, I just I guess I've never never heard that before. So I'd like.
Well, not only that, how do you merge two lots with two different houses on each a house on each lot? How do you merge them?
Yeah, I work. I work in a a tax office and and, you know, the people, all sorts of people have tiny little lots that they get taxed on that never merge without without having to take further action on it. So it's it's the first I'm hearing of this when if someone owns several lots, they suddenly they merge. It's the first I'm hearing and if I'm wrong, I could be wrong.
Well, hey, any of us can be wrong.
I'd like to hear it. That's all.
But but how do you merge a lot that has a house on it into the other one? How do you do that?
Very simply, you now have one lot with two houses on it. Yeah, really. It's not at all hard.
I I my recommendation is we let town council do the research on this.
I'd like to look a little more at it.
Okay.
I I would like to hear town council's thoughts on it.
So we're probably going to have to suspend for to give you time to do your research.
That's right.
But I but I don't see how you take two lots with two homes on them, homes that people can live in, and somehow you now convert that to one lot with two different families living in two houses on one lot.
Now we're going to make two nonconforming lots. You can't do.
That would be a backdoor way to to violate the zoning bylaws if.
That's right.
If if you can do that, then half of this town's going to build houses for their kids.
Right.
That's right.
Merge the property.
And that's that's what it seems like to me. I it's just it's the first I'm hearing of that.
Can't do that.
I think you're all going to be very surprised that the law is in fact that these law these nonconforming lots have merged.
I'm going to interrupt again. I have one question for Ms. Bailey. Sorry. If in fact your water, the water issue is solved so that there's no water from his property going onto your property, do you have a problem with this garage?
I have a problem that the judge ruled that residential private garages not more than three vehicles need to go before the planning board. And I don't think.
And that's from what I understand, that's if if it's commercial, if it's residential, no. Is that true?
That's three residential uses. It's in the third paragraphs of the ruling that he has.
Because our bylaws, I think our bylaws have changed.
He specifically says you're not more than three vehicles. Now, I I don't have a problem with a garage that that holds three vehicles, but I do have a problem with a garage that's the size of a commercial garage that holds six vehicles.
I wouldn't say that.
That doesn't hold six vehicles.
You'll never get six vehicles in that garage.
Law footage would hold that.
So backing up, you don't have a problem with him building a residential garage for residential use only. As long as you have a problem with that three vehicles.
There are three vehicles. There are three vehicles. You put a camper, a boat and a truck. That's three vehicles. But I think our zoning bylaws, I think we've changed that.
What we had in mind.
I think we can have a four or five-car garage now on a house. That's been changed.
Well, this was from the judge's ruling.
Yeah, I don't care the judge ruling. I'm saying our bylaw ruling. He wasn't looking at the bylaws.
He wasn't looking at the.
Well, they weren't up to date.
Specifically filed that if it's a residential garage, they have to go to the planning board for a special permit.
And we've had
We have a bunch.
People fighting a three-car garage. They want bigger and there's houses all over town with more than three-car garages.
Maybe entirely true, but the bylaws say you have a residential garage.
The building inspector should never approve them then.
Isn't the planning board after the zoning board?
No, other way around.
And just 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 for a little bit of clarity, and I'm going to defer to town council to do a research, but the law that Henry Attorney Lane is referring to about the merging, he leaves out the part about the exception to those arguments is when they have specificity and identity, identity, meaning that they clearly the lots can be identified as individually and certainly a lot with a house on it has specific identity.
That is not an exception to the rule merger.
Read the statute.
Thank I'm going to wait for the research.
If we're going to continue this to deal with the merger issue, let's just continue it. You can fight the rest of the battles if they come up.
The specificity.
I would.
secures the exemption. Is an exception to his argument for merging.
Mister Mister Chair, if it's okay, I would like to make a motion to continue this hearing on a different date. Do a week pending research of the new evidence and new legal possibilities brought to light.
All in favor?
I got one more question. If you can make a lot bigger, you can't make it smaller.
Right.
So he owns all this. How is he ever going to make sell this lot?
He can't.
That's right. He can't.
Exactly. That's why you can put the garage here.
But you just said before that he plans on selling this lot. He can't sell that lot.
Exactly. That's why you can put the garage here because he can't sell the lot.
And if you put the garage right here, he still can't sell this lot.
But so there's no reason to put it near the street. He's got plenty of room next door. We can put it fifty.
But he doesn't want it there and I don't blame him.
But if he comes before the ZBA.
We don't live in Russia where you can say you got to do it here.
The Mendon voters have decided the fifty the front lot setbacks fifty feet.
And they've decided that there's a zoning board of appeals.
Bought that.
Yeah.
And it's done all over the lake.
If if they meet the statutory requirements or variances, which he does not.
I believe he does.
Well, we're all entitled to an opinion.
Do I have a second for my motion?
But I just wanted to on on that last statement. If you most certainly can subdivide that lot again, if you come before the ZBA and you allow it.
If you come before.
That garage there, it's all done.
You're correct. Yep.
It's just.
Coming for a small lawn.
About a self-created hardship.
No, what what we have here is misinformation, making statements about the law that are not correct. To say you can never subdivide that property again is entirely untrue.
Yeah.
You have to go through a process.
Yeah.
Of ZBA, but there is a distinction in the statute that he refers to about merging that talks about a specific identity of the two lots. You have a house on both of those lots. That is a specific identity. What he's what he's relying on is two lots or three lots or four lots that aren't developed, that are just land.
Yeah, because you've only got one hundred and forty-four of your furniture total.
You know, he's arguing when you have undeveloped land that it can merge. But that's not what we have here.
That's right.
Henry, do you have enough information there to that we've satisfied the questions that the judges asked for at this point?
So pending pending research on hardship.
Just that he has enough. Do you have all the information that the judge has asked for?
Yes, there's the other statutory element and we could we could address it at the next hearing is the question about the public good.
About what?
About the public good. And that's where, you know, we could hear from the butters.
Well, let's hear it right now. The meeting hasn't been closed.
So I'm taking I'm not getting a second for my motion.
No, because we haven't finished. She's still.
I guess I.
He's hanging out there. That's all.
The question of public good hardship, all that basically is dependent upon the question of merger. If you've got the question of merger, your hardship disappears.
We don't have a question of merger.
No, it doesn't disappear because the lots are still too small.
It does disappear. If the lots have merged, the issue of.
We're not merging those lots.
You don't do it. It's already happened.
Only if it meets specific standards.
Look, read the. Judge Fay just.
We have. We have two different, from what I see is two different interpretations of this law.
We're probably going to have a third.
And and we're probably going to have a third and the third is is the council that the town has hired to look into this stuff and I'd like to hear what she has to say on it when she researches it before we we look into this any further. Personally, the other members of the board might feel differently, but that's what I'd like to hear.
So if I if we go back to the stand the variant standard, so we have soil conditions, shape or topography, which we talked about earlier today in the hearing. We have the question about hardship, which pending research will there's will continue the hearing. And then the other element is and that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. That's the next element.
Address that now so we can.
Sure.
All done, so we don't have to put anything else later.
Yes, we would love to address that, but let me ask one preliminary question. Did we do some cell tests or any borings to see if that cell tech that cult technique infiltrator is going to be in ledger or some some other soil substance?
When I did the excavation there, that particular area that was chosen for the cult egg chambers has earth there. The rock is more towards where the garage is going. There is earth on that side.
There's no ledger on that side.
No.
Okay.
As you can see by the vegetation that's planted, with deep root balls.
Did you do a soil analysis?
No, excavation while I was working.
So no soil analysis?
What do you want to sieve on loom? A sieve test? Yeah.
Just a just a title five soil analysis.
Why would you do that on loom?
Just just because. Well, you got to you got to calculate the volume, the required volume of that infiltrator. Like I said, it needs strong water management standards for that type of soil. I'd just like to see the data if I could. Okay, I I have, despite the fact that the board ordered me to get a copy of that plan at the last meeting, I have not yet received one and I'm sure that's an oversight and I'm sure I'll be getting one very soon.
But it is here. Mr. Attorney Lane, do you want to look at the calculations right?
I would have liked to have received it, you know, three weeks ago when the board told you to send it to me. That's what I would have liked so I could have had an opportunity to review it before tonight, which is really unreasonable.
If we want to grandstand.
Yeah, we'd like to.
Yeah, why?
Apparently that's what's necessary.
Why don't we stop that? Why don't we look at the facts, okay?
Yeah, the fact is you didn't send me the plan when you said you would when the board asked you to.
I don't have the.
No, he doesn't. I was up to the board.
Here three weeks ago, I was told I would have it the next morning.
We're in transition of secretaries and stuff and that all didn't happen.
Okay. So that's the reason I didn't.
But that's not.
Despite the fact that I was assured I would get it the next morning, right?
There's been a whole chain of over help in the town.
Attorney Lane, you can have this conversation.
I appreciate that. I wish I'd gotten it three weeks ago like I was supposed to, so I could have had a chance to review.
But you can't dispute the facts. You attack the.
You don't have to have an attitude.
Terms terms of the final criteria, okay? Despite the fact that you think you have all the power. The voters of this town decided that in this zone, buildings have to be fifty feet from the street, okay? Currently, other than the variance that you granted a couple of years ago, pretty much everybody in that neighborhood has their their significant buildings fifty feet from the.
No, that's not true. There are commercial and industrial buildings five feet off the street.
So with trial.
Henry, we showed examples of trial. Come on, all around the lake. Come on.
The neighbors to this property.
Let's let's stop this. Let's stop this.
Detriment to the public good or not?
Yes, absolutely.
Well, then let's.
Your bylaw says fifty feet, okay? Every time you give a variance, it's a detriment. Those bylaws were adopted for a reason because the voters in this town decided that was an appropriate setback. Now, I I admit there are older buildings that buy like that and I admit that you granted variances that derogate from that requirement, but that's what the voters decided. It's not up to three people to decide. Screw them. The voters decided this. This is a democracy.
Gentlemen, did they also in the bylaws design a zoning board of appeals?
No.
Yes.
Did not.
That's what it's for.
Zoning board of appeals is statutory.
Otherwise, everybody around Lake should tear down their buildings.
Were you were you gentlemen appointed to this position by the elected officials of this?
It's statutory to interpret the zoning laws based on the based on the conditions that that have been laid out.
The same people that you say created the bylaw, the exact same people that put the people in office that appointed these people to make decisions when that should be when a variance should be provided, the exact same people.
But that's not the case. The case is that the zoning board has very limited jurisdiction under the statute and it's limited to grant a variance in cases of hardship, okay? That's that's the fundamental question. You don't have general jurisdiction to make judgments as to what you think is the right thing to do. The question is have you met the statutory criteria? Is this a hardship, a legitimate hardship?
I believe it is.
What's the hardship?
Ledge. We just went through this.
We're not going to go through that again. We're not going to repeat that. We've answered that question half a dozen times.
You think it's okay because he's asked for it? You haven't demonstrated.
One said that.
No, nobody said that.
That again, misinformation. They never once said that. We gave testimony. Were you here for the testimony?
I haven't heard a hardship.
Were you here for the testimony?
We're going.
This is not, jeez, this hearing is not going in a direction that we're answering the questions laid out by the judge in a in a sequential manner and I it we've it's clear we can't answer one of the questions without some further research. So I once again would like to make a motion to continue this to a further date where we we come back and we have a more.
Hold on, Tom. I'd like to go through all the things first so they come back one time. I don't want to have.
Well, is this is are we going through it right now or are we just having a back and forth?
Well.
Like. The same points being brought up again.
I tell you, we're on to the next question.
We haven't established a hardship yet.
We're talking about public detriment.
Maybe you think they haven't. It's for them to decide, not you.
We have.
And hardship's a separate element. Hardship is a separate element.
I understand, but that's the that's the first criteria. There has to be a hardship before you even get to the public good issue. You haven't established a hardship.
Square footage is a hardship too.
But you haven't established a hardship. I I've been here for the whole hearing. I haven't heard a hardship.
Well, you know, we we've given our testimony about.
I missed the part about the hardship.
Okay, well, why don't you let me finish?
Okay.
Okay, we gave our testimony. You haven't offered a single bit of testimony, just you arguing. Where's the evidence?
It's right there on the table. It shows you that there's plenty of room to build that.
Why don't you why don't you show us who your experts are to come here and say that? Because you don't have any experts here. You don't have anyone testifying, Attorney Lane. You just have you arguing. I can argue all myself.
Which one of your experts is going to tell me that that house cannot be built? They just did.
We can't turn this into a battle of legal interpretations right now. We already decided.
Can't be answered till you get the information. Take that away from me. Take that away from me.
There you go. There's your expert.
This question cannot be answered until she does her homework and gets back to us. Right? That's how I feel.
A bit of professional decorum here.
Yeah.
That is how I feel. That is how I feel.
We've got a bad attitude here.
I also, you know, it's clear that this.
Even if he puts on his little lot, he's got to go for a side, side lot setback.
It's a side lot setback.
Yeah.
He's got, he's got plenty of room over there. You tell me where the side lot setback.
Depends how big he wants the garage. If I was him, I'd want a bigger garage.
Put that garage right there. You tell me where the side lot setback.
I know, I know. The board should ask Ms. Attorney Lane to have his expert come forward and testify to these things.
I want to end this tonight.
I, I don't, Attorney Lane is an attorney. He's not the expert. I can make all these arguments too. We have experts here who have testified. Where's his expert? This was the hearing tonight. Where have you been?
I was here. I haven't seen any expert that told, that showed me that you can't build this garage over here. It's your obligation, not mine.
That question can't be answered yet.
That question cannot be answered because we have a difference.
Because it's my obligation.
Oh, it's a difference of opinion on the law.
All right, all right.
Let town council do that. But we were supposed to be moving on to handle these other issues.
So let's move on. Let's stipulate that if these lots have merged.
We're not stipulating anything. We're going to wait till she renders her legal opinion and then once she provides it to you and me, we will evaluate and make a determination if we agree with her.
If he moved the garage over here, then she, the water problem is not going to be solved on her problem. The water's still going to keep going on her property.
That's, that needs to be addressed, but we don't know that until we know whether or not that garage can be put over there.
Let me also remind you, this is a board hearing, not a courtroom. We're not, here's.
That's right.
We're not doing stipulations.
Right.
They're not binding.
Well, we want to get this done. All I'm saying is if in fact these lots have merged, it's very clear and scratch will be put over here without any variances and therefore.
Mr. Benoit, if he wanted it over there, he would have designed to put it over there, but he wanted it here.
That's why we have bylaws because people can't do just.
That's why we have a zoning board for variances.
If you meet the criteria, which he clearly does not.
That's your opinion?
No.
No, that's the law, actually. That's what the statute requires. That's not my opinion. That's what the legislature requires. We may not agree with the legislature, but it does not make the law go away.
All right, I don't want to talk about that anymore. What's the next statement?
The next statement is the substantial detriment to the public good. That's the next element. Does the board want to address that now?
Like to hear it before we.
Sure. So the argument made by Attorney Lane failed. He argued sight distance issues, safety, fire trucks can't get on the property. People can't see him coming out of the by, out of the driveway. The police chief and the fire chief gave written statements. Both were available to testify and he agreed that they didn't have to testify. The police chief said there's no sight distance whatsoever. In fact, they improved because you move it seven feet further off of the road. The fire chief viewed the location and provided a, a very informative letter that there is no issue for fire apparatus to maneuver on that property. There is no substantial harm to the public. No one's placed in, in an unsafe condition. In fact, it's an improvement because the property is moved from, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, about two feet off of the sidewalk to roughly nine.
It was two. That's right. We asked for that and he did that.
You wanted sight distance checked. The police chief went there and did a sight distance and there is no issue. We presented overhead drone photography showing there was no sight distance issue and the fire chief said there's no issue moving his apparatus around on that property.
Which does not remove the fact that when you decide to eliminate the fifty foot setback that the town meeting voters.
We're done that. We weren't talking about that anymore.
Derogating from the intent of the bylaw.
Yeah, but you get back to the fifty foot again.
Public detriment.
Public detriment is what we're talking about.
Oh, okay.
Public detriment. How does this create a public safety issue?
In terms of public safety, we're talking detriment. It's derogation from the bylaw.
We're talking.
We didn't want that, not said that anywhere.
Substantial detriment to the public good. That's the element we're at right now.
Yes.
That's not the bylaw.
That is the statute.
Tell us, why don't you provide us with your expert or even your own argument? How the public good is damaged by destruction?
The public good is damaged because the town meeting voters have decided that the setback in that neighborhood.
You were hung up on that.
No.
Well, that's, that's.
With that argument, you're arguing that every single variance is a detriment to the public.
You should have needfully undo the one you just did on TAF DAF.
Yep.
Probably should, but that's not the issue.
But, but so if your, your argument that these zoning laws were passed by the voters, which they were.
Yeah.
Every single variance is a detriment to the public good with that argument.
No.
That's the way I take it.
That's what it sounds like. There's argument to me.
Dramatically oversized monolithic garage that I think goes thirty feet high.
That's not.
From the edge of those, of the.
That's a matter of opinion.
That's a different argument than we are just arguing with the, with the zoning.
I would like, I would like, excuse me, I would like all you butters to agree to withdraw this whole issue tonight.
It's not going to happen.
I'm asking, not asking you, I'm asking the butters who are the complaint. You, sir, with your smirk on your face, also.
They are represented and I will speak for them, okay?
It's okay now. That's very.
Well, earlier, the earlier you, you were smiling through this whole thing while you were listening to us argue and it irritated me to, look, watch you smiling as all this menagerie was going on.
I would like to make a motion to continue this hearing again a different date. Once again.
We heard enough? I'll second it then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pass.
Thank you, gentlemen. Can we do, um, so we probably want to wait like counsel. I know this isn't the only case she has in the whole world, so when she thinks it's a good time for us to circle around. I would suggest that Attorney Lane and myself have an opportunity to respectfully request, have an opportunity to review your legal opinion prior to the next hearing so that we're ready to, uh, Attorney Lane, do you agree with that?
That's fine.
Maybe, uh, if possible, seven days, if possible.
We have a, we have a hearing on the twelfth.
We, we haven't decided a date yet. She's got time.
At least three days.
So you're asking for.
Yeah, whenever you're done with your legal opinion, can we, can we at least have a couple of days to see it?
You're asking for my conclusion based on that legal opinion. I, it's going to be attorney client privileged.
Well, it, are you going to, all right, so I was under the impression you were going to present a document to the board.
To the board.
Okay, but if, if that's going to be in public, the privilege is waived. So, you know, we'll sit tight until you decide.
Yeah, let me.
I think.
Yeah.
We have to get the document first, right?
Yeah, well, you, you guys, your lawyer will, will tell you if, if, um, we have a right to see it. You know, what? It gets all complicated, but let's just see, let's let her give an opportunity to take a look at it.
Done.
All right, we got to figure a date.
Well, do you want a date or just do you need time?
Yeah, let's, let's not decide a date till you get your, then let us know what the date will be.
If you don't set the date, it's going to have to be published, so.
I don't want to republish really.
You got to set a date.
I agree with Attorney.
All right, why don't we set a date?
You can always, you can always.
Three weeks and have it continued if we can.
No, it's continued, but you better set a date.
So would that be the twenty sixth you're looking at or the nineteenth?
You can decide.
Uh, the twenty sixth works better for me.
Is that January?
Yes.
January twenty sixth.
That's a Thursday. That's going to be enough time for you, Mary.
That's, that's plenty of time.
Our meeting's on Thursday, so.
Seven o'clock.
I can make anything you want. Six thirty, find a.
Seven o'clock, seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock? I, I don't care. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question for the board. Has everyone on the board read the judge's ruling? I know Mr. Cardy has, he's at the hearing.
I.
Have the two, the other two, Mr. Van Giswiss and Marali?
Marali.
You read the judge's?
I have not had a chance to read through it yet. I was just appointed to the full position last night, so.
They have the little machine.
Absolutely.
That's going to be the simplest thing right along that top side.
I absolutely have a great.
It's important that before you make any decision.
It is.
The judge's.
I will take some.
Right over the pavers.
And I do still have.
What else are you going to do? Trail the park? Was it a merm of some sort?
I just was asking to.
Well, the square would have to go in the water because you have to dig to have that, that pavement right to the edge. And then it's the slope.
And I know Mr. Cardy was with us and did the.